I'm going to ask the school committee to go into the audience because tonight we're really excited to have Mr. McNamara take the podium and he's going to be presenting to the community at Lincoln High School. So we take our seats in the front.
Thank you, Mrs. Fortunato, Chairwoman Donna Beadie, and it really is my pleasure to bring you kind of a snapshot of Lincoln High School tonight. And I'm trying to do it under the lens of our core values and our beliefs, which are an essential part of not only our accreditation process, but really forcing us what we do every day. Really, it comes down to our core values, our beliefs, and our expectations for learning, both academic expectations, social expectations, and civic expectations. But for the purposes of night, we'll talk Lincoln High School through the lens of our core values and beliefs. Joining me, kind of around me, is our longtime Assistant Principal from my COB, serves as Letters 83K. Joining us this year, who's been a wonderful addition to our staff, is Dr. Kim Liberty, serves as L through Z, and our administrative liaison, who's been with us for some time, is Ms. Vars, who worked on many, many, many different projects throughout the year. So that's my administrative team, and I'm really lucky to have such a talented and dedicated team. So, it's gonna be a good day at Lincoln High School.
When I get in school, I'm made of stuff today, all right, you know, getting work, and I just feel happy being here.
As they come into Park Lot, Lincoln High. So if you're familiar with the blessed page of packet, it's just our core values, beliefs, and expectations. They have them all. Like I said, it's a critical component for us. Our core values are developed really at the beginning of our PBIS efforts to reward student behavior. It's really set into stone what we want our students to exemplify on a daily basis. Faculty was really committed to their adoption, and they didn't want to lose them or change them in any way. So one of the things that we do every so often is we do our PIS rise up tickets. So you hear the acronym, RISE UP, Respect Integrity Safety Engagement Unity and Pride. They're a really important reforcer for kids. They know that they get a rise up ticket if they do something that exemplifies one of these things. We do it on a regular basis. By far, the most popular reward is lunch on me on Friday from whatever little establishment that we're heading to that is by far most popular. Second most popular, I'd say, is the free homework ask, followed by no change in PE. So our core values are really important as we get ready for our March of 2018, less than two years away and counting, to send our accreditation visit. So a really important thing that everybody needs to be able to, you know, talk about with Lindsay as we get closer to that day. All students who graduate career in college ready for multiple pathways of learning. I think it's really important that we take a look at both of these. One of the things that we believe at Lincoln High is that the rigor is non-negotiable. The pathways may be negotiable, the experiences that kids need on a daily basis, the depth and alms, the authentic learning, those are non-negotiable things. So on the left-hand side, you have honor physics class, Sigariat joins this year, is doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And on the right-hand side, you have some kids who are at the career fair, which we've done for the past four years. I really want to thank Mr. Cobb, led that work, along with our school coordinators, Mr. Callahan, Mary LaCassio, the guidance department, Patty Hill, our transition coordinator, for working on our career fair to get kids ready, you know, what comes after, not only after high school, but after college, because after all, everybody goes to work. We've really focused on expanding rigorous coursework over the past few years. It's been really a front and center item for us on the administrative team, expanding not only our AP courses, but honor courses, our enrollment, and Rick's early enrollment program, just got a letter, Tay, personal finance is now going to be considered part of early enrollment for Rick. So we're very, very proud of the way that we've expanded. We've taken some risks. We've offered AP human geography to ninth graders. It's right, raised eyebrows at that time, we didn't know how quite that was going to go, but you can see that they did phenomenally well for the first year and had a great, you know, really good first time out. This year, we're offering English language and composition, in addition, some other new courses that we'll talk about in a minute. But it's really important to understand the logic behind what we do here. We have certain pie, you know, we have a certain size pie of kids that can take these courses. You can only take so many lectures as a student. So what we started doing the past couple of years is to do these courses above our honor courses, kind of below grade tell. So we opened up this world to a whole new gap of kids. So it's really allowed us to expand our offerings, increase the rare, and it's worked out quite well. Mr. Rule's gonna talk more about the transition to calculus BC shortly. So you can see our time, we've almost doubled our AP offerings since 2008, and in the underlying our early enrollment courses, you can see we've just, you know, increased things dramatically. And we're really, really proud of that. Not only we proud of it, college boys are very proud of it too. Not only for increasing our enrollment, but also our excellent performance in the exams. We were a college but honor roll school in 2014 and 2015. That was a huge honor for us. It really validated the work that we've been doing, you know, including more kids in classes, but also holding to a very high standard. So at this time, I'm going to call up our Master Partner Chair, Mr. Paul Rule, who's going to be A-lead assisted by two of our students that are in his calculus class, Catherine Patterson, Matt Martin, and Mr. Rule.
Good evening. So I just wanted to talk about a little bit of a push for this if you guys can come up. So when we're talking about these students, we're talking about these students, talking about these students that I'm talking about being exceptional students and really being able to handle content. These are the two students in mind right now that are current juniors that are in the AP class. Typically, our AP class for calculus was, it's called AB, is the first course in it, and it typically was 12 grades, as Mr. McNamara said, being able to persist on a couple things we're going to talk about. So where we were and where we are today, I just kind of wanted to take a look at this. So over in 2010, 2011, we had 10 students take the AB exam, and our average was like 25 the year before that. Not very good. So since then, we've real struck to, as a department as well, align our expectations for our students in our honor courses and really make sure that students are prepared for this exam, so they can go on to college and understand the material in college, eventually. You can see each year, we've had quite a few students take it, and they've definitely welded the material, and expect the same thing this year. We have 41 students taking the class, because we have some of these students in the class this year. In the past several years, since 2012, 2013, 100% pass, which means three are greater, so every student's taking class, passing exam, and all four of every high student has a five in the exam. So they're extremely well prepared, which obviously led us to, these students are so capable that they're able to handle more, which is why we're trying to offer the BD calculus, which the next phase of the calculus. The way that we got there, which is very difficult to do in most high schools, is that one of the things that we introduced is an eighth grade student can take geometry via the VHS program. That's one pathway, and another pathway, as they may skip out, I'm not sure, ask them to say anything specific, so find out, they say if they went through the summer program, to get really intensive exposure to tricks so that they could take calculus as shared students. And this also could lead to the implementation of a calculus-based fix as they move on to senior in the future, if you know what I mean, so I'd like you to hear from them directly more than from me.
Hi, I'm Catherine. I'm part of the calculus BC program at Lincoln High School. Being a part of Mr. Rule's AP calculus class as a junior was intimidating at first, being surrounded by group of seniors who had taken a year's worth of calculus, whereas we had taken 27 hours over the summer. And so for the first few weeks leading up until the start of the class, I thought that wasn't going to be good enough for it, or that my grades weren't going to be as good as I had used them being, because of the limited preparation that I had thought that I had. And there'd been more than one person told me that being a part of this program was insane, and that none of us are ever going to be able to do it. But being in this class with Mr. Rule has been an incredible opportunity for all of us. He's encouraged us all individually to be successful, not just having high grades, but to actually understand the material. And he really pushes us to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, so that we can get higher grades on the AP exam, as he showed in the data form earlier. And it's resulted in my confidence in my ability and all of my classmates in winning a five on the AP exam in May.
Hello, my name is Matthew Marto. I'm part of the same math program as Catherine, my other juniors. So as a junior in Mr. Rule's AP calculus AB class this year, I've been continuously met with numerous challenges that with the help of Mr. Rule, I get to be able to overcome. Although it was intimidating walking into an AP math class, I received only two weeks' worth of precalculus compared to the other senior students who studied it every entire year, my peers and I have since adjusted to feel very comfortable in class. Mr. Rule is able to instill a sense of confidence in each and every one of his students that I truly believe to be unmatched by any other teacher. Mr. Rule emphasizes the philosophy that as a student, get out what you put in. Throughout the course, he always made himself an available resource for more help, pushed his students to achieve perfection, which his class means getting every question right on the AP exam, but willing to suffer a score of five, which statistically don't, notating that one extremely well off on the topic. As a result, I will never forget when very early in the course, we took short online questionnaire asks for our basic information, such as our name, email, and a series of yes or no questions. However, the very last question they asked was, are you ready to get a five on the AP calculus exam? Different from this question that there wasn't an option to answer no, only a yes option. In my opinion, there is no better way to describe Mr. Rule's dedication to success of his students. Consequently, his main compromise abilities in calculus opened up wide, wide, bright opportunities to pursue with such education. As a junior, this math program has provided me what I believe to be a significant advantage credit to those I may compete with in the college application process, and I'm looking forward to achieving even higher levels of success in the career with Mr. Rule and AP calculus BC.
Matt has changed gears from ratio mode quickly back into academics mode. He's had quite a weekend. At this point in time, I'd like to call up our English department chair, Mr. J. Schofield, and also two students out of the same... Oh, that's right. Again, AP language and composition is a really good example of how we've expanded our offerings and thinking about it in new ways.
Good evening. As, whoops, as I dropped things. As Mr. McNamara said, my name is J. Schofield, and I am the honor and privilege of serving the English department chair at Lincoln High School. And you'll hear some from some of the great English teachers who are in the audience as well, and I'm happy to see them. When we talk about AP language and composition, the course is meant to be equivalent to a first-year introductory course in rhetoric and composition. So it's been quite an adventure for us to enter into the AP world. We've had a very successful program with our AP literature course taught by General Mr. Morgan. So it's very intimidating for me as a new AP teacher to fight to get my students, whether it be Matt, Catherine, Gabby, Ashley, who's not able to be here, and several others, ready for his course, but it's an honor to do so. When you look at the course itself, it also gets very naturally entrenched in education, especially to study English language arts. The English department at Lincoln High School has spent years and continues to continually refine curriculum according to the rules of common course standards and for the rest of time, but also for the rules that revise SAT. So the core of English language and composition fits very nicely to things that we're already doing, but enabling us to, it's another opportunity for them to refine those skills and to excel, not only on the AB exam, but also in its very relevance in terms of SAT and the breadth of college and career, as Mr. McNamara said earlier. For myself, I was surrounded by teachers in the building, whether it be the English department, the social studies department, math department, like my colleagues, the rule, and many other teachers who continually challenge themselves to improve their practice, let their student have the best teachers possible. And I would never, it would be used by such great models of teachers, I always want to challenge myself. So that's why I took on teaching AP language. I have to be honest, it's one of the best decisions I've ever made, and to many of us in the building sitting right here, it's a, I'll give you a saying, because they continually form me with their talent and their skills. I can see them laughing over there, because they probably can't believe I'm saying that about them. But the gear for daily rewards, and that's enough for me. I introduce Ali Husein.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dieter Ali Husein. I'm a collegiate junior at Lincoln High School. I'm here to talk to you about the advanced English language and composition course we offer at our school. I'd like to start off by talking about educational and rewarding experience this class has been, especially the tutelage of our teacher, Mr. David Schofield. In this class, we've gone from studying Native American literature to American Revolution literature to Civil War literature right now. In this course, we have looked at the English language masterpieces that have influenced the history of man throughout the ages beyond just fundamentals. If you ask me what rhetoric was in August of 2015, I would have said, I have no idea what you're talking about. rhetoric is a way various authors, writers utilize strategies, techniques, influence, and motivate the audience to which they write. It is safe to say I utilize these aspects every single time in English class. Without this class, I'm not sure if I would have been able to make writing as different as it is today. Before this year, I not found my interest in the subject of English to such degree as it is today, and felt it didn't have much relevance in my future. However, our study of the English language, looking at literature through the lens of rhetoric, technique, and strategy, prepares us for a level of sophistication and success we not even imagine yet. Just last week, my fellow peers and I participated in a professional-type debate discussing the controversial topic of whether or not the adventures of Huckleberry Finn by Mark Twain should be centered to the offensive language and remarks obtained. In this debate, I saw a level of professionalism and vast knowledge I have never seen to such a degree thus far in my academic career. It was very interesting to see such organization and ordiness that you would see more in an adult life setting. And I'm very happy to see our faculty, and especially Mr. Schofield, have helped us get here. Now, don't get me wrong, it's not a walk in the park. It definitely tests your abilities as a student, both in time and the quality of work that you produce, though it will prepare you for life after high school in such a unique ways. So I'd like to thank you, Mr. Schofield, for helping us get this far, and I hope you do it. I hope I can utilize everything you've taught me and will teach me to benefit myself and others around me in the future. And it doesn't hurt to have someone else to talk about our work with on a regular basis. Thank you, everyone.
So we talked a little bit about preparing for college, but we also want to be career ready. And we're very lucky at Lincoln High to have some Perkins-funded academies that have been around, some have been around for a long time, others are relatively new. I want to call your attention to Journalism and Broadcasting Academy, which is kind of in the middle in terms of age and seniority in the academy system. But it has quickly vaulted to the top in terms of its quality and its scope. So far in that, when Ryan began its Perkins approval process, they basically took a look at our academy and said, journalism and broadcasting, they're ready to go through this full-blown process. And what that allows us to do is allows to solicit students from outside of district to begin tuitioning students who may want to study journalism and broadcasting. So that's a really exciting development. You're going to hear a little bit more, so I don't want to sound cozy-sunder. Our Little Public Safety Academy has done really, really great things with Rodwell Williams University, allowing six credits which can be transferred, they're not just Rodwell's credits, they're transferable credits. That's a real bonus to kids that go through that academy, that meet the criteria, that do the extra product, and really a fantastic opportunity. You have a picture of design and engineering and the wonderful things that go on in Mr. Gervais' room. You're looking right now at Design Tech, you can't really tell if a little blinker on Lincoln High School, there it is, there we go, you can see where we're designing it. And they came and talked to you last month about all the wonderful things that go on in there, their dual screens, 3D printers, we have two 3D printers, which is a huge benefit of the program. We're really very proud of what we're able to offer in that regard. International Business Academy, do a lot of work with Bryan University, low companies to get kids, you know, the experience that they need to go on and do business in the world. And our Sports Marketing Academy, it's our newest one, and really is still in the process of kind of coming into its own, but it offers kids a great opportunity to go and see things that, let's say, in the province, Bruins, you know, it's a hot tech, very popular, and really looking, you know, for a way to ensure that all our academies kind of rise to the level of where journalism is and law and public safety is, so that kids get the best opportunities that they can. So talk a little bit more about our Journalism and Broadcasting Academy. We have Mr. Picozy, as you know, earned distinction to be a master journalism educator, and won a CISO award, and honor that she honored her a couple of months ago. She joined Mrs. Ciccarelli, who works very hard teaching our introduction to journalism program, and I'm going to bring Catherine Patterson again, and Gabriella Carson, to come and talk a little bit about their experience in the Journalism and Broadcasting Academy. And that picture of our announcement rule that goes on every day.
I don't think I have to explain too much because I'm here quite often. But I want to just say a few things about the Journalism and Broadcasting Academy, because I think that, you know, we have a lot of fun, we do a lot of wonderful work, but we're here to respond to the needs of our kids, and that's really what we do at Lincoln High School, that's what we do every day. We are creating better writers and communicators, people, young people who have confidence, who know how to research, who know how to use the very same technology that professionals in the business are using, which is also very expensive, which is why we got so grateful for Perkins funding. And, you know, we are actually developing children who are children, students, young men, women, who are really interested in the world around them. So ultimately, Ms. Ciccarelli and I, she has been, I've been lucky enough to have her as a colleague in journalism for the past two years. Last year, we made a real concerted effort to take this step early, you know. Very often, we believe that one of our responsibilities is to make sure that our journalists, our young journalists become contributing members of a democratic society. So generally speaking, part of curriculum is string public service announcements that benefit the community. We talk about bullying, we talk about, you know, harassment, we talk about behind each other, we talk about doing something to the earth, we talk about everything. And last year, we actually did a special program, as you know, with We Are Here, which really mobilized the community for quite a while, and it was extremely exciting for me as an advisor. And this year, we actually done a very big, took a very big bite out of the community. Yeah, we are actually hosting tomorrow a school-wide straw election, a primary election. All of our journalist students are working it, they are working the polls, they're covering it, they are streaming live, they are writing about it, they are reading, they are doing everything possible to let you know how our straw voters are going to be choosing the next president. So actually, I'll have you to continue talking about this for a minute, because the last word we have the Secretary of State to this very currently. But so I'm really pleased to be here, I'm honored to have my girls here with us. I'm going to ask Ms. Ciccarelli to continue, and Gabriella, who's our photography editor, and Catherine, who's editor-in-chief.
It's been an honor the past two years to work with Mrs. Picozy. This year, I love teaching you about journalism, and I'm amazed what my kids can do. And what we do in our program, I think, is to look at the war from a different lens. Actually, the idea originated in one of our kids in terms of having the presidential primary. And so many phoned calls to the Secretary of State's office and torturing Mr. Mac with how we were going to take on this endeavor. They only have done it with small groups. I think Barville did this here with two classes. When I told them that we wanted every one of our kids, so we were looking at between, I guess, eight and eighty, 850 students to come through and vote tomorrow, and I'm really excited about it. And my last conversation with representative from the Secretary of State, I said that Secretary of State would be like all of the high schools in Rhode Island doing this. So once again, Lincoln High School, the town of Lincoln, blazing trail. So really proud of my kids, about to be part of this program, and about to be a part of this district.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gabriella Carson, and I'm the photography editor for the Lions Word, and I also contribute stories. And Catherine here is a co-editor, she hung with Dani Kadenoff. And being a part of Journalism Academy has had an incredible impact on my time in the high school. My photography skills have expanded so much. I originally joined Academy because in AP, when we were reading descriptions of the classes, I saw journalism had photography units, so I decided to do it. But it really brought me out of my comfort zone, because it wasn't the type that I was used to. And I've become a lot more social person, because being a part of journalism requires you to be heavily involved in the school, you kind of have to go outside of your comfort zone. And since we have frequent deadlines in class, my writing skills and my ability to work under pressure improve a lot. And you learn a lot about ethics in class and working with people, which is different than other classes, because the way it's structured is you work independently, but you still have a lot of responsibility because of that. So you don't really get the same opportunity in other courses, and that's one of the reasons why the Journalism Academy is so valuable.
Being a part of the Journalism Academy has really been an incredible opportunity for me throughout high school. Along with Gabby, I started the inter-journalism class freshman year and was named editor-in-chief by April of my sophomore year alongside Aaron Bannon and Devin Smith, who were both incredible editors. And after they graduated, I knew that I wanted to do as much as they did in Otmore. And this year, we've had such a small group working in the topics class alongside our extended intro class. But the 12 of us in the topics to journalism class have really had to step up and learn how to be leaders, not only within our school, but within our community, with projects like Mr. Picozy mentioned, the election, and things like that, taking on things of that nature, and really being able to lead people and get news out in an unbiased and efficient manner, working quickly and being able to lead a group of people, which I think will really help us all as we get older and as we move into the real world.
So it's really important that we all understand what a comprehensive public high school means, and our lack is our best way to show that.
My school's going to have a run, I have to say, and what I do is I break it down to the pot. So you know how to write an open paragraph, right? A little bit of body, of flows, and a flow pattern. This is where we are right now, so yes, automotive, but we're going to take a little bit of writing, and then the next one.
And the grades class, they're a whole set of pieces here. And then our students can come up with the design and paint, and that art gives auction bucks, and the money goes directly to the tomorrow fund, and that money really impacts students in our community that have family and relatives that had an effect by childhood cancer.
Partly good at school is to engage parents in a meaningful way. And I have Kate Tompkins, who's the president of our PAC here, to speak a little bit about our active and adaptive PAC. We'd love to have more members, but we're very lucky with what we have, and it's really been a great thing, and Jesus sees from tears, Taste of the Blackstone.
Hi, as you said, my name is Kate Tompkins, and I'm the president of PAC at the high school, and I also have a daughter at Central, so I'm a member of PAC there. Following is a brief little thing that I say parents want to miss to try to recruit new parents. I know there aren't too many parents here tonight, but just bear with me, and imagine being a parent, and this sort of calls arms as it were. We all know how important it is to stay involved in our children's academic life, both at home and at school. The Lincoln School Department has given us many tools with which to participate in our children's education. There are the listsers from Superintendent Fortunato and from each school's principal. There are the school's websites, teachers' websites, the many school-associated Twitter accounts, and the district Facebook page, as well as Superintendent Fortunato's phone call and voicemail messages for urgent and immediate notifications. To keep an eye on grades, there is the MMS portal, containing every grade, absence, and missing assignment, not to mention the accessibility of all teachers, staff, administrators, and school committee members by email and phone. But what do you do when you want to be more involved in your child's school? So many want to be active participants but are afraid they might not have the time or overwhelm with the options. Maybe you don't know who to contact or where to start, or are afraid that you'll be asked to make a bigger commitment than possible. I'm here to tell you that there's always a way to participate, and that whatever time, effort, and energy you are willing to share, we are willing to accept. Each school has PTA or PAC, and they're all filled with warm and welcoming people. Yes, it is great if you could jump in, attend every meeting, and make a position on the board. That isn't the only way. At the elementary level, people are always needed for our, for science night, or math night, or game night. Do you have small children, make it difficult to do things outside of the home? There are always a couple of phone calls that need to be made. Is your schedule inconsistent and a little out of sync with the school? There is never assorted errands that need to run, or posters that need to be made, or envelopes that need to be stamped. Do you have special skill or knowledge that you want to share? Bring it up with your PAC principal, or your PAC president, or school principal. We want you to share it as much as you want to share it. If your child has special interests at school and you prefer to volunteer your time and energy to that end, that's great too. At the high school, there are BAME boosters, the postscript committee, and the athletic council, as well as individual clubs, sports activities. Any one of these would be grateful for your help. The middle school too has a wide range of student clubs and activities in addition to PACs. At the elementary level, many teachers are looking for volunteers in the classroom on a weekly basis for certain activities, and volunteers are always needed for annual events such as Ganses, Sports Night, and Field Day. The point is, when you participate in your child's academic school life, your child benefits, the school benefits, community benefits, and you benefit. An hour a week, an hour a month, an hour a year, either from home or in the school, whatever level of commitment, time, effort, work, field, works for us. Pick up the phone or tick the email and say, I want to help, what can I do? Contact your child's school, teacher, coach, or PAC president, and we will find the opening that has been waiting for you to come fill. As I said, that is called calls arms. Anybody who was at last week's Taste of the Blackstone, or at our freshman roar, or at end of the other school events, our teacher appreciation can see to what incredibly dedicated and enthusiastic group of parent volunteers we have at Lincoln High School. Thank you.
The quality of education that my daughters hear at Lincoln High School is phenomenal. I'm happy, she's happy, she's challenged, and that's what I wanted. There's no other place that I want her. Lincoln High School is great for her.
The best thirteen-second commercial we could ask for. It's really important that we kind of talk about the fact that sometimes kids need a little extra support, and kids need a little extra help. It's very important to us that we identify those kids early and get them the right support that they need. Addressing the needs of all learners, we have tiers of interventions, and all of this kind of based on data. So with all different levels of support and levels of intervention, we have our attendance team focusing on improving our daily attendance and addressing chronic absenteeism, which is a big problem in the state of Rhode Island. Our PBIS initiatives focusing on behavior and school climate, RTI addressing academic, and also behavioral deficiencies that some kids may have, special education for those students identified on their IDA that need a modified curriculum. So that underpins all this, a lot of these work together, and kids, we talk about attendance, And kids, we talk about in attendance, we'll talk about in PIS and RTI and so on and so forth. So it's really important that we know that we have to get everybody to the finish line. And these are ways that we work on that. Getting to the finish line is really important. It's a goal that we can all set for ourselves. We've been able to get to a 94% graduation rate rate, which we're very, very proud of. And you can see, we had a lot of work to do. And when you talk about real numbers in terms of 84%, 86%, we're talking about a significant number of kids that came in in grade nine that for whatever reason did not make it through in their cohort. There are lots of different reasons for that. And this is not a dropout presentation, this is not a graduation rate presentation. But what we need to know is we saw the data, we saw the trends and we knew what we were doing just wasn't good enough, it wasn't working. But we really put in a lot of interventions, like what advisory is the slide that you saw before? It was a little neat snapshot of that to really identify kids that need that extra push towards graduation. So we put in these different interventions. And I'm also going to give a plug for the administrative team. As an administrative team, we worked really hard to identify kids and form relationships with kids that we believe are at risk. And nagging and prodding and nagging and nagging more has really paid great dividends for us. This year, we're really proud to get to that 94% rate. And that's a real testament to teachers' work every day. It's not about one intervention, it's about the interactions and the quality of the relationships that teachers develop with students and administrators develop with students every day. At this time, it takes hard work, it takes giving message that we're not going to give up on a kid, even when a kid wants to give up on himself or herself. So out of all the things in this presentation, I would say by far away, I'm the most proud of that number because it really represents what we try to do as a team and as a school. I've also spent, since 2009, it's the graduation season of 2009, I've spent personal time meeting with every kid that's in danger of not graduating and working to get them across the stage. It really, it's very, very validating to have that as the ultimate goal of the whole school community, knowing that we're all pulling in the same direction. And that really is the most important that we can take away from this is that faculty and staff really have a can-do attitude. They know that this is really best measurement of our success as a school, as a community, that we're not leaving kids behind like we were here. This is our ultimate goal at the end of the day when we receive that diploma at DCRI.
You know, as a freshman, I didn't really understand how important it'd be to have these relationships with teachers. But now that I'm graduating, I know that teachers are a little bit more than your teachers are. They are honestly friends and they're something that you can always rely on to go do. And it's really important that students have a special relationship with at least one of their teachers so that way you always have someone to go to.
It's okay to be scared coming in as a freshman, but your priorities are to change. Like freshman year, you're going to want to be social and explore the school. You're having your stress, whatever. By the time you're a junior, you're going to be focusing on your grades and school and try to get into colleges, SATs and everything, you're going to be a totally different person. It's all because of the way that teachers and faculty and peers everyone shapes you throughout your time here.
You know, as a freshman, I didn't really understand how important it'd be to have these relationships with teachers.
And skill you need thrive and rest alive, Lincoln High School plays a part. We know we're doing a good job when kids come back and say they're well-prepared, whether that's in college or in a career, technical school, the military. We've prepared our kids well for their next step. We know we've done the job.
So special thanks really to Mr. Pacozi and her staff and kids for getting this video together, which we used a longer extended version of at our open house for incoming ninth graders. So hope that I've given you a real good snapshot of all the great work that goes on every day at Lincoln High. It's a team effort. And I am so blessed and so lucky to have been the principal at Lincoln High School since 2008. It is really my dream job and thank you. It's a pleasure.